I'd like to call to order the meeting of Bryan City Council for Monday, December 18th, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. And we have a lengthy agenda this evening, so we're going to get things rolling, starting with a public hearing for zoning code changes.
Okay, I'm not sure if you guys want me to talk about this now, or when the ordinance comes up, or if anybody has any questions from the audience regarding the zoning code. But you were all presented with it there at the last meeting. Planning Commission went ahead and approved it. Basically, clearing up, reorganizing. All in all, I think we eliminated about 70 pages out of the zoning code by reclassifying things and reducing all the duplicate statements in it. One of the highlights is we got rid of the Board of Zoning Appeals. During my time with the city here, we've only met twice in 20 years. So now administrative appeals will go to the Planning Commission. Anything that's getting appealed from the Planning Commission will go to Court of Common Please. Another thing we eliminated was the C-3 Design Review Committee. Just trying to streamline the process. Still rely on downtown people for their judgment and on downtown stuff, but just kind of eliminated that committee to make it faster. Do you guys have any specific questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Someone, please, second, we're talking about signs, temporary signs, remove sections on the election signs. Could you go through a little bit, just amend on that?
Um.
What was removed? What's left? What's what's removed from my question?
Violates free speech, so we had to remove it.
Okay, so it's, well, so the answer to my question is, is you put a sign up anytime you want for as long as you want? As close to the curb as you want?
No, we can still do placement.
That's what my question is.
But we can't limit the timeframe.
Did not we ask that it be removed within 30 days after an election? Did we keep that in there, or was that part of that court case?
I'm not sure if that's in there or not.
I'll have to check on that and get back to you next week.
So.
Is that ordinance that we, that you will see later is just for a first reading?
Yes, we can still limit the placement, we just can't limit the timeframe for elections.
So that's, if it just says, remove section, I didn't, I don't, without rereading the whole section, I don't know. So basically, there are still some, maybe some of these things, the time, the pieces.
Correct.
And then, another one I have was on, uh, section 1174 through 7, Pennsylvania, which is one, um, it talks about, I think, is that one about what is considered trot, additional conditions, agricultural use? I think this is what I'm talking about. Well, it may be it's the one about, that's where it is, the conditional use based on agricultural pieces. And right now, currently, that's corn, soybeans, wheat, hay, oats, alfalfa. And then, in the future, if something came up, you would be, that would be reviewed and determined that that was an acceptable prop.
We talked about commodities. We said commodity crops is the agricultural crops allowed.
And I guess where I'm kind of going with this is that, is this, is this some place where marijuana could end up?
It's not a commodity.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. No, I'm good.
Any other questions for Mr. Waters?
Anything from the crowd?
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Andy. Okay, the next item is to approve the minutes of the December 4th meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henrik?
Yes.
Next item is a hearing of public concerns.
Tom Sproul, resident of Bryan, Ohio. My comments this evening are directed towards the cannabis legislation or the ordinances that are on your agenda tonight. And I know two meetings ago, it was brought up that tax money raised from the sale of cannabis would go to the state and then come back to the city of Bryan. Well, last week, the Ohio Senate passed an adult-use cannabis bill, cannabis bill, whose major change was the excise tax was raised from 10% to 15%, but no revenue coming back to the communities with operations. So that is the Senate version. The House version, as we don't know yet, it's gone to the House. They may change it, but as of right now, tax money will be held at the state, will not come back to the city of Bryan. Okay. Also, recently, the village council, West Unity, passed an ordinance that would prohibit the adult-use and medical cannabis operators, cultivators, and dispensaries within its village limits. They voted the will of the residents, and we may see other villages in our county do the same. Now let's look at the city of Bryan residents and what they want. It's been stated in this room that the vote by the city of Bryan residents was 51% for, 49% against. I agree with that. That's what the vote was. But what I don't agree with is, that doesn't include all the residents of Bryan. What about the Bryan residents that live outside the city limits? The ones that call Bryan their home? The ones who, when asked, where do you live? I live in Bryan, Ohio. The ones who have the Bryan, Ohio address, 43506, same as you, same as me. They work in Bryan. They shop in Bryan. They dine in Bryan. They worship in Bryan. And more importantly, they send their children to Bryan City Schools. So how did they vote? If we take into account the people that I'm calling residents, who are in the Bryan City School District? Well, I have here from the Williams County Board of Elections, results, official results. And if you'd like to see the results that I got today from the Williams County Board of Elections, I will gladly give you a copy so you can follow along. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks.
Bryan School District, at the top, issue two. Precincts are listed on the left side, and the six precincts that we have in Bryan are the first six. We know how they voted. The next six precincts include Bryan City School District of Jefferson Township, Palaski Township, Superior Township, and Center. And when we add those up, at the bottom of the first column, yes votes, 2,097. That's 2, 0, 9, 7. No votes, 2,280. 2, 2, 8, 0. That's 2,097 for the, for the issue, 2,280 against it. 48% for, 52% against. That shows me that the Bryan residents in the Bryan City School System want to say no. And they have said no. And I think you should take this into consideration when you discuss your, the three ordinances that are on the agenda tonight. If you're going to vote, how the residents voted, the answer is no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? If not, Mayor, I understand you have some things you'd like to do?
I'll actually start with you, Mr. Hoopie, and I'm only standing here because of the mic situation. It is your last meeting as council president. One of your coworkers, I actually ran into them Sunday at a choir concert, and they mentioned, you know, you being council president, and I mentioned that you may want to return your gavel and be pretty excited about it. For a year in review, at the beginning of next year, we sought out and interviewed a new city attorney, very successful hire with Mark Fischel. Thank you. By March, we were talking about interviewing and hiring a clerk treasurer, which we successfully got a great one, in John Leonard. So your year was not full of a lot of fun in the beginning. There were definitely some bumps. There were some requirements for you that, you know, between your full-time job and your council job, you really managed well. Certainly appreciate it all of the times that we talked through city issues throughout this last year. Appreciate your attentiveness to this department heads, my office, and just want to thank you for a well-rounded year as council president to your service to the city, so I have this plaque for you for that. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would be remiss to not recognize Judy Yarris. She has served on city council with all of you, most of you, for eight years. She and I came on as new council members together, and a couple of years later, I decided to run for mayor, and she has stayed on as a council member for this community. You've done very well representing your ward. You've done very well representing the department heads. We appreciate that you always ask questions. I know I can speak for all of them. You certainly have their back in the room, and they know that. Obviously, when mistakes are made, we go back and fix them, but certainly appreciate your candor and your leadership in this community for the eight years that you've served, and we will miss you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for those kind words. I appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is the Clerk Treasurer's Report.
Yes, thank you. Council has been, has been in receipt of the financial statements, bank reconciliation and so forth, for the month ended November 30th. And as usual, I would say that I could answer any questions you might have, and certainly if you have future questions, I'd do the same.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henrik?
Yes.
Next item is an ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 61, 2023, an ordinance hiring a city attorney and declaring an emergency.
Council, you are presented with an ordinance to hire Mark Fischel as our city attorney for the year of 2024 at the rate of $210 an hour. I think I can speak on behalf of the management team in the city of Bryan. We have appreciated this year's counsel from Mark. He's very responsive. He is very knowledgeable, and we are hopeful that you will retain him for this year's, or next year's contract. If anyone has any questions for Mark or I, we are both here to entertain those as well.
I'd like to make a motion to hire Mark, and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you. You too.
I'll second that.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Henrik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 62, 2023, an ordinance to accept the proposed planning and zoning code as prepared by Revilly Limited and approved by the city of Bryan Planning Commission.
I would ask that we do a first reading on this and allow more public input, and depending on what happens tonight with other ordinances, make changes and get those incorporated into the new zoning code. So just asking for a first reading tonight.
And Andy may have already said this, but this has already gone through our Planning and Zoning Commission for review, and we had those meetings last month.
Yep, they should have all received those minutes last time, so.
We just want a first reading.
So, you know, the way we've done these in council's absence was to, it got its first reading, there was no motion to do anything else. I say it just has its first reading, but if we want us to take some other action, we can do that. But I think the way we've done it with these cannabis ordinances was, it got its first reading, and it was just, there was no further action. Right, I think that makes total sense with this one as well. Thank you. Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Andy.
Figure this thing out yet?
Room number seven.
Next item is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
So, you know what? First, let me apologize for adding my share to this agenda. I think I have like the next eight ordinances, so sorry about that. As you all know, we're trying to make this the last meeting of the year, and so there are some things to take care of. Ordinance number 63, 2023, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, and declaring an emergency. Two or three weeks ago, the Budget Committee for the council, Mr. Betts, Mr. Cosmplick, along with Mayor, myself, department heads, Derek Schultz, spent the better part of the whole day reviewing the operating and capital budgets for the city. We had a lot of great conversations, came to agreement on a lot of items. The, the ordinance before you is a result of those conversations and input of all the department heads, and I should say that the Board of Public Affairs has already authorized the budget for BMU for 2024, and of course, they're included in these numbers for your all approval. The, you know, the way we measure a budget, as was part of that discussion that day, can be a little bit different. Do we measure the budget versus what we budgeted a year ago, versus what we plan to spend this year? And then there's all kinds of moving parts or components to this budget that don't necessarily make sense to talk about the bottom-line number, but what I will say, and I'll be brief, is that we are looking at a budget that is about 4.7% lower than was budgeted a year ago. That being said, it's about 5.5% higher than what we're likely to spend in 2023, are those projections. It's really in line with where we are. I think the overall, the overall budget is $56.7 million, 8.4 million of that is the general fund. And you almost have to discount a big chunk of that that accounts for transfers from the tax funds, the general fund, and the capital fund, and the various, so. There were a number of items that day that we talked about that are included in this budget. The one that we did not talk about, but is kind of the end result of some of the changes that we agreed to that day, and really, the only number that I would highlight, highlight to you, is that I did bump the amount of the transfer from the 1% tax fund to the general fund to accommodate some of the discussion that took place that day, that I felt was going to leave the general fund with too thin of a fund balance at the end of the year, so I did bump that number. It was budgeted originally at $3.5 million for the year. I bumped that number to $3.9 million. Otherwise, any changes that are in here were the result of what we discussed that day. And I would entertain any other questions, but that's all I have.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Leonard? And I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Henrik?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is another ordinance. John, if you would please number and read.
Ordinance number 64, 2023, an ordinance authorizing the salary ranges and classifications in the compensation program for the city of Bryan, amending ordinance 66, 2022, and repealing any portion of ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency. So each year, the council passes an ordinance addressing the non-bargaining wages on the city side. The information in here would be consistent with everything that's built into the budget. Of course, we have, what do we have in place? Six different unions. Board of Public Affairs approves their own, their own wages. So we would ask you that in keeping with passage of the 2024 budget, you also approve this wage ordinance for 2024.
I'll move to, I'll choose to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And.
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Henrik?
Yes.
Item number nine is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 65, 2023, an ordinance amending the salary range, the salary for ranges 1, 2, and 3 of the Bryan Volunteer Fire Department. We, I think we had to make a similar adjustment mid-year earlier this year, but these are the first, the lower three tiers of the volunteer fire pay, and we really don't have a choice in adjusting them because of the minimum wage in the state of Ohio has been raised and exceeds the bottom tier, I think the bottom two tiers, and then we had to adjust the third tier to kind of keep things in line. So this addresses the minimum wage change in the state of Ohio and how it affects volunteer fire wages.
So it's not a change in the requirements for those ranges, it's just a change in the dollars?
Correct, the minimum dollar amount. Yep.
Thank you.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Henrik?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Next item is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 66, 2023, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring an emergency. So I had provided council with a revised version of this ordinance prior to the meeting, so that's the one we're talking about now. This, this appropriation addresses a couple of things. One, the, the Board of Public Affairs had approved, on their side, authorizing the appropriation and transfer of monies from the water and electric funds to the water and electric capital reserve funds. I think it's kind of a thing we do each year where they're setting aside money from the operating fund balances into the capital fund for future projects. So this ordinance gives, the council gives authorization for those transactions to take place. And then, the item that I needed to revise the ordinance for was, a few weeks ago, we talked about the closeout of the Horton Heights Sewer Project, and we had taken all the steps to zero out that fund and put the surplus money into the capital improvements fund, all that fine, but actually didn't have the authorization to, I didn't have the appropriation to make the transfer, so I added that to this ordinance, and now Horton Heights will really be cleaned up and legally, so that's what's in this ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll move to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Next item is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 67, 2023, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending December 31, 2023. And this directly relates to the BPA transfer of funds from the water fund to the water capital reserve, and the electric fund to the electric capital reserve. So it goes hand-in-hand with the previous ordinance.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 53, 2023, a resolution providing for the repayment of an inter-fund cash advance. In 2022, I believe we provided a cash advance from the 401 Capital Fund to the 411 Horton Heights Sewer Project Fund, with the idea that we would be receiving grant funds down the road, so to be honest with you, the idea of advances is a little bit new to me. I haven't done them before, but it's basically you're lending money from the capital fund to the capital project fund, and when the project is done, the grant monies have been received, 411 is now paying back 401, and that's what this ordinance accomplishes.
Okay. I'll move to suspend.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Henrik?
Yes.
Next item is an ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 68, 2023, an ordinance for a then-and-now purchase certifying adequate funds were available. This, the responsibility for this would fall on me. The timing of how we made Bureau of Workers' Comp payments in my previous city was a little bit different, and when the bill came in in December, I was caught a little bit off-guard. I did not have a PO in place to make the $98,000 workers' comp claim, really, for 2024. So anything over $3,000 that I don't have a PO in place for, you all have to approve, and that's what this asks you to do. Money's budgeted, it's in the line items, I just didn't have the PO in place.
I'll move to suspend.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Next item is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 69, 2023, an ordinance to amend the city income tax code, Chapter 181, to comply with the changes made in House Bill 33, effective January 1, 2024. Earlier this year, the General Assembly in Columbus had passed what was referred to as House Bill 33. It made a number of changes regarding tax code in the state, some of which affected And as you'll recall, several years ago, the city was required to adopt kind of wholesale changes to our local income tax code, so that there was consistency between cities throughout the state. So we are required to amend our code again to accommodate these changes in House Bill 33. 33 that affected us. The biggest one had to do with businesses and allocating their net profits in response to having remote workers who could be working in 50 different locations, their hometown, their offices, I mean, their homes, so that they weren't allocating their net profit tax to each place where they had a remote worker, but could still refine it to the cities that they have, that the business has locations in. So business location versus the remote worker location. It's all in response to what happened during the pandemic and the expansion of remote workers. There were some other minor changes. There were some that didn't apply to us because we already had them in place, but that was the biggie. And so this ordinance would accomplish getting that language put into our code.
I'm assuming when you talk remote workers, that's the contractors, you know, those, that would probably be common.
Could be office staff that has decided to work from home.
Office, okay.
Yeah, even employees who were allowed to log in and work from home instead of coming into the office.
Sales spokes.
So it would make the filing of taxes for the business for their net profits very complicated to track where any number of employees live and they're working from.
I see, okay, thank you. Entertained motion?
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Those are all mine, thank you very much.
Thank you, I know there was a lot putting all that together with the end of the year and everything, so thank you. Next item on the agenda, your work's not done yet, it's an ordinance. John, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 572023, an ordinance limiting adult-use cannabis operators, adult-use cultivators, and adult-use dispensaries operations within the city of Bryan as amended.
Counsel, this ordinance is actually the one that you had taken several amendment changes during the three reading process, and Mark Fischel is here to answer any of your questions, but just to go over a few highlights, this would limit the dispensaries, cultivators, and operators to within the sections C1, C2, I1, I2, MU. Obviously, home grow is not something that you're legislating. Also, that growing, selling, distribution of cannabis is prohibited on city-owned property and within 500 feet of parks, schools, churches, and government-utilized buildings. I think those were the major pieces. It did obviously limit to no more than one Level 1 adult-use cannabis operator, no more than one Level 2 adult-use cultivator, and no more than two adult-use dispensaries permitted within the city of Bryan. So I'll open up the floor for you to discuss. Mark is here tonight, too, if you have specific questions. Obviously, as Mr. Sproul pointed out, there's been a lot of changes in the last week regarding the Senate and frankly, the governor backing that Senate bill. House has not met yet. I do need to not anticipate them putting forth their bill or voting on that until at least mid to late January. I don't think they're back in session until the second or third week of January.
Just to add to that, I talked with Representative Hoops for quite a while earlier today to get an update and to pin down some issues, one of which is, after a couple of questions, a final question to pinpoint the issue for him was, do you see the Senate, do you see the House rubber standing or accepting the Senate bill? The answer was no, I do not. I've already talked to the number of House Republican in the House, and they are, we are not on the same page. And I said, can I ask on what issues? And he said, sure, a number of plants, number of commercialization and signs, amongst some other things. And I said, okay. And I shared with you some money. And he said, sure. I said, well, first and foremost, I don't hear anybody talking about potency. What is already in Avery, what is already voted? It's going to happen, let's live what we can live. And one of the issues was the amount of THC potency. We talked a little bit about that, he wanted to know more about that, and ended with not investing this a lot, ended with that he wants to take that to the caucus because he thinks that is an issue that they have not discussed that is, has value. Second one, I said, how about odor, especially for processors and growers? And I explained a little bit of that. He will be taking that also to them. And then I ended with something that's not that significant, but, you know, if we're going to allow it in the city, there ought to be some kind of incentive. I don't think I understand why that was taken away as a social equity issue by the Senate. His response was, I agree, that it's one of these other issues that we are going to be discussing, and we'll see where that goes. I'm not sure I understand the point of that either. So I don't know, that's what I heard from him. If he were sitting right here, he would be saying that's what we took to discuss condensed. So I'm, at this point in time, you know, and he also reiterated what the mayor just said, which is it's going to be at least six to eight weeks before there's some kind of a final bill. So I said, well, if that's the case, then your thought on us waiting? And his statement was, well, you can, I don't think it's going to have any negative effect, but it potentially could, because you just don't know, and you have that many politicians voting, how that's going to go, if they want to immediately do something or if they want to straighten it out. I can tell you this, he said, no licenses will be issued for at least nine months, but as it relates to, you're asking the question, will you be able to limit at some point in the future? And I would say yes, because that was in the original bill, but the legislature has been known not to follow through with that. So you are taking a little bit of a risk, and Mark and I talked, well, email, same difference, about this issue as well. There is some risk that we will not be able to set limits, so I just thought that would be helpful information, since it just all actually transpired a few hours ago. At this point in time, based on the fact that the issue still is, it's coming one way or another, we can control location, size, type, and number, I would move that we accept ordinance 57. Thank you.
Was there any discussion from the other council members?
I would like to table.
All right, Mr. Legalese, you got a motion and a...
So first of all, there's a motion to approve. The next question is whether or not there's a second. So if somebody wants a second to that motion to approve ordinance 5723, now is the time.
I'm having a motion because I want to ban it.
And I want to ban too. I don't want it in the city.
So I would recommend then that, since there isn't a second, that Mr. Cosmplex's motion to table would be appropriate to consider. Understand that if there's a second to that motion to table, then there's really no, there's no real discussion about the merits of this ordinance. It would just be tabled to be brought off the table and reconsidered at a future date, subject to council's decision.
What happens to the timing of that is not such with the state legislature. If they go ahead and do what seemed like a slim possibility for Mr. Hoops, but if that would occur, and it would not allow cities to limit?
So I think you're right. I think it is very unlikely that that will be part of any changes that we see. From what I've seen and read and heard, is that there is some disagreement, as you, Mr. Betts, have shared from Mr. Hoops, Representative Hoops's perspective, that there is some disagreement between the House and the Senate about how far modifications should go, but I don't think the modifications are going to go to the core issue like, such as having legalized marijuana and recreational, and also addressing, or I don't think anything's likely to change a city's right to control what happens in its jurisdiction on this particular issue. Again, we don't know, of course, but so, so what I would say overall, whether or not this one is tabled or approved, or whether another one is approved, I think there's two things, two things that, from my perspective, are, I think, important for you to consider. One is, I think no matter what you do tonight, if you pass something tonight, or if you don't, you're going to be revisiting, council's going to be revisiting this issue perhaps in the first quarter of 2024, that soon. Second of all, if there is any desire to prohibit as the current law allows, or restrict the number as the current law allows, I think the city is better off passing any such restrictions before, well before we hear somebody coming to the city and saying, I bought this property and this is my plan. Not that you couldn't restrict it down the road, but that it is less difficult to restrict that usage if the restrictions are in place before somebody who owns property tries to assert their right to use it in a certain way, because then it's more likely there will be a battle between the city's right to enact zoning regulations and somebody's personal property rights. Again, I'm saying that as a really big picture point, not that, oh my God, it's going to happen for sure. So that's why, and again, this is something that Mr. Betts and I have discussed via email, why I do think it makes sense for city council to consider one of these ordinances before, even though we don't know what the state's going to do, and then plan in all likelihood to revisit the question next year. Sorry, that was way longer winded than you wanted.
No, it's okay. Okay. See if I'm prepared for this one. So an option would be to, to go with the limit and potentially ban later, depending on what you see from the state?
That is certainly an option.
Okay. If you ban now, can you go back to limit later?
Yes, and I would say that, again, that banning now and limiting later is marginally better from a legal standpoint than limiting now and banning later. I'm not saying you can't do that, I'm just saying that I think, I think the safer path to take, if you want more time to think about this, is to ban now and limit later.
I, I, no, that's very helpful, because I've been on the fence with him since noon when I, from noon to, whatever, 11 to noon when I was talking with him, as to what direction to go. He wasn't all that helpful, because he's in the same boat, which is, I don't want to tell you
Right.
what's going to happen, because I have no clue, and you may be caught off guard. So I'm more into a safety mode at this point, as long as we can have some control in the future, which has been always been, I think, all, I think most of ours, and not all of our cases, we want, if it's going to come, we want what's best for the city of Bryan.
Right.
And if it's best to ban now and potentially then later, based on what's going to come up from the state, and we have an option, I'm good with that.
Then I do think it does make sense, if others are good with that as well, that I think it makes sense to table the ordinance that has just been read, 5723, and then it's either going to be, one of the next two that you have is going to, would ban it completely. I don't remember which order they're in, but...
Yeah, so it's the next one that would ban it completely. So we have a motion, Mr. Hoopie, do you mind if I?
No, go ahead.
We have a motion to table with no second, if anyone wants to act on that now.
Well, before we do, I just need, we can process and go through this. So if, if we, in your opinion, what would be now the safer, but the quicker, more effective the Fisher route, to go to, to table or to ban now?
Well, I think to table the ordinance 5723, which limits, makes sense now, and then to pass the ordinance banning now and plan to revisit sometime when we know more what the state's going to do.
All right.
So there needs to be a second on the motion to table.
I'll make that motion.
No, Jim made the motion, you're going to second.
No, what?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes. Okay, next item on our agenda is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 522023, an ordinance prohibiting adult-use cannabis operators, adult-use cultivators, and adult-use dispensaries from operating within the city of Bryan.
I'm sorry to interrupt, John, but I'm looking at the, what was distributed to the council members, and I think it's at 53, 23? I'm not sure if that's accurate.
53 is next, we haven't gotten there yet. 52 was first.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I misread it, I apologize.
No, there's three.
Yeah, yeah, I got you, sorry.
That's fine. So the ordinance number 52, it was just read and numbered for third reading, this is actually the ordinance that bans use of cannabis operators, cultivators, and dispensaries from operating within the city of Bryan.
I'd like to make a motion.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
That actually was already done.
That was actually a third reading, yeah.
It was your third reading.
Yep.
That's number three.
We've done all kinds of new things for you guys tonight.
That's a very helpful one.
Good, I'm glad I could be of service.
Next item is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 532023, an ordinance prohibiting adult-use cannabis operators, adult-use cultivators, and adult-use dispensaries from operating within the C3 zoning district in the city of Bryan.
Insisting not take care of that?
That's what I was wondering.
So I believe it did, so, so I think, so this one was on there because there were different iterations and different considerations. I think unlike the 5723 that you tabled, I think it makes sense if council is so inclined to just vote this down and get it off the, just vote no, that somebody would make a motion to approve with a second, and then again, voting no...
Because we're even going to ban in the future or limit, and the limit includes nothing in the city.
Correct.
So this, I'll make them...
You're still making a motion to approve, but then voting no?
Like when he does a roll call.
That's kind of weird.
Yeah, it is.
I'll make a motion to approve, so.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
No, you're voting no. You're voting no.
I mean, you can choose to vote, we...
You're allowed to vote yes, but...
John. Yep.
Mary? Judy?
No.
And Rick?
No.
That way it's off the, you know, it doesn't mess up your table and you don't have to worry about it. No, it's good, it's unusual, to say the least.
If we're nothing, we're entertaining tonight. Moving on to the next item, which is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 702023, an ordinance establishing residency requirements for employees of the Bryan Police Department and Bryan Fire Department.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
We're simply asking to...
We're simply asking to expand the living requirements for the city of Brian to include Williams, Fulton, Lucas, Wood, Henry, Putnam, Paulding, and Defiance County.
What is the current?
A county or adjacent. So it'd be Williams, Fulton, Henry, and Defiance.
So not Putnam, or Paulding, or Lucas?
Will that affect response times or anything like that?
Well, yeah, I mean, as far as calling out, but it gives us more of a pool to draw from, and then if people, you know, if they're going to stay on, I would imagine they're going to move closer to, closer where they're working. But this way, it helps hopefully fill the ranks.
Obviously, you don't see that as a problem, where you wouldn't be bringing that...
Correct.
And the other piece, specifically the fire, is they do have, you know, that 24-hour shift, the 12-hour shift, they can pull from other departments. Again, the chief, and I will tell you, we've had extensive conversations about that, because it is a big deal to change residency requirements, but given the pool of folks we can choose from, if we can get a good candidate that's outside of that, and they show up to shift on time every day, as long, you know, if they're not, we deal with that in a different faction. So their shifts are their shifts. Obviously, we have to call in their seniority and union contracts to deal with that.
I'll move to suspend.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second question. Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next item is another ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 712023, an ordinance requiring the mayor to reject all bids for the project known as 2023 Lincoln Park Restroom Facility.
Okay, so what happened here, which has only happened three times that I can remember, and each time it was not estimates that I prepared, it was another consultant that did that, but the bids came in more than 20% over the engineer's estimate. I talked with Denny Bell, who was a consultant on this, and he said there was just a multitude of things. I don't know if some of it was just timeframe that was being billed in, but just materials were higher, and he just missed the estimate a little bit. So, we're looking at, between Benji Dominic and myself and Mr. Bell, we're looking at just a couple things to try and reduce the cost a little bit, but we're asking you to reject all three bids and authorize us to rebid it. We may address a few cost savings, but we may have to come back to you and maybe ask for a little funds to be appropriated, to maybe cover some of the balance there on the project when we come back with the next bids. I mean, we've spent, we've had a lot of money donated in the park there, so it wouldn't bother me a little bit to ask for a little bit of funds from you guys to help out with that, but we can't do this in this case, because it was more than 20% over the estimate. So we need to scrap them and start over and rebid again.
It was like 21%, right?
Correct, yeah. So I'm asking you to suspend the rules and authorize us to do this, so we can get bidding in January and start building in April and get things done on time.
Do you think there's, so the reduction of this should not be difficult?
No, I think we can take 10,000 to 20,000 off, maybe a little more, depending...
By taking some of the things out of the bid?
Correct, yeah. By just scaling it down just a little.
It's not significant enough for the end of the park's department.
So what, what...
I don't know if we'll get down low enough. I don't know if I'll get down to the 153,000 that we had donated, but...
Yeah, as long, as long as the park is the way you're going to want it when it's done.
We're not compromising the facility.
Right.
Correct.
I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
All right. We'll be back in February. Hopefully, with a better answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 542023, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Economic Development Transfer Form, TRESX, for a liquor permit to be transferred to the owners of Ritty Stores LLC located at 1108 South Main Street in Bryan, Ohio.
Okay, council, you have been presented with a TRESX applications from Ritty Stores. Again, we have Mr. Schaefer, their attorney, and Mo and Louis here this evening. Thank you for your patience. You've watched government at work probably longer than you wanted to this evening. Again, council, when we first started entertaining TRESX this year, we did talk specifically about food and entertainment, dining-type things. The Ritties occupy the Brian Wash and Phil, and then also what it was formerly known as the Brian Drive Thru that they have renovated, came to the last council meeting with their local permits for work that had been done, and then also sent sketches of what they intend for this to be, in a convenience store, and I believe a pharmacy-type or...
Just a convenience store.
Just a convenience store. Okay, so all of those sketches were provided to you in your packet. You are, and we'll give them, them time to speak, but you are going to decide whether or not you would like me to execute the Economic Development Transfer Form requested for them. The liquor permit was out of...
Bethesda, Ohio.
Bethesda, Ohio, which is...
Southeastern Ohio. The business is now closed. You can go on their website. So this license is sitting there, and this has become a fairly common practice these days, where folks that are more economically tuned, upgrading, seek out these licenses from depressed areas. I'm sorry, there's no other way to say it. Questions? These folks have come to town, as you can tell when you drive by the car wash. They're upgrading, and they've spent, as detailed in the TRESX app, they've spent in excess of a half million dollars. I'm being told tonight that it'll probably reach a million by the time they're done. New parking lot, major upgrades, the car wash, the vacuums, and then to this convenience store. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Yes.
I will, I will tell you, one of the things I really appreciated was the amount of information that you gave us. That was, that was fantastic.
Thank you.
I do have a question, and whoever can answer the question. Is there a limit to the number of TRESX that you can get into a community?
There is a limit. I cannot recall the exact number of that. I've looked into it recently with, because you had another one before you, but I do not recall the, the number. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, yeah, we currently have, based on the data that I received, we have 44 permits that have been issued to the city of Brian, in various categories of, which these gentlemen all are aware of, D1, D2, D3, D3A, D4, and D5. Dealing with, I think, 26 of them are on premise and 18 carryout. So, as long as, obviously, we have some room at this point, that's not an issue. But what, would it be feasible, is it, is it a decent, is it a viable request to ask maybe the zoning committee folks to kind of look into that issue with how many TRESX permits are allowed, and do we want to look at limits in the future? Not this in the future. Is that a, is that a request that makes sense?
I think we should answer the question. Yeah, we should.
I think before, yeah, because Andy's writing down notes, but if the answer is two, that may not help you for your future growth plan within the city for the, you know, dining, entertainment piece that you had discussed. I don't know that. Could be five.
The dilemma I have, which I don't mind discussing publicly, is these gentlemen have outplayed more money than I've made in my lifetime for a facility, and because we have not got that information in a timely manner, and I don't blame anybody for that, by the way, it's just a statement of fact.
Well, you just asked the question right now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, the point is, is perhaps the question should have been asked a while ago, but my point is, is I think, I think there's a difference between now and the future. I was more interested in the future, and if the answer is we have one left, then we deal with that. But I would, I would like this, to see that occur in conjunction with making a motion to approve this.
I like the idea. They're taking that building pretty in that way it was. You know, they're not starting something new. They're just taking something and reopening it. They're not building, building out past roofs or someplace like that, if we need something like that in that area. But they're not building something new. That's why I think that it's a great idea to give them our support.
And again, this only just puts this TRESX motion back into the hands of the division. It will come back again to you for final approval. You'll still have your opportunity to, to...
So you don't need a motion from me? I'm sorry, I'll retract it. You don't need it?
No, I think you can, this is a first reading, right? I think you can just hold it for a second reading.
You got it. So do I.
I mean...
Yeah, but you wanted that question. You can choose to do three readings on every ordinance and resolution that comes before you, but you've asked a question you want answered before you approve.
Well, not necessarily before. I have, I have a question that I'd like answered, certainly before the next one. I would not...
If I'm understanding you correctly, John, you would like to see this one passed, but with the future having that information available for anyone else that...
That's what I'm saying, correctly. Yes, that's correct.
Yes, then you would have to suspend the rules.
Then I will make a motion to approve.
Suspend.
To suspend.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
So we will have to probably get you a certified copy from the clerks. That is going to take a couple days.
Fantastic.
And get that signed and...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your attention.
Andy and Brian, if you could...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And probably in conjunction with Mark.
Oh, never, never.
Right, yeah, I mean, I just, I've been zipping through a couple, the Department of Electric Control website here, and I can't get an exact answer now, but I think, I think we can pinpoint where to find it.
Moving on to the next item, which is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 552023, a resolution to designate a central business district in the city of Brian, Williams County, Ohio, and declaring the same an emergency.
Council, we have been working with Mommy Valley Planning and a couple of our downtown business owners who are working on a grant application for the Brian Downtown Revitalization Project. And Mommy Valley Planning, before their submission, actually needs us to have you pass a resolution designating the central business district, which we already have. Brian was kind enough to create the maps for us for that, but it is the C3 core, and we just needed this resolution to be passed in order to send that with the grant application through Mommy Valley Planning.
Well, I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Item number 22 is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 562023, a resolution to accept a donation of land, 1.48 acres, parcel number 06319010029.000, Williams County, Bryan, Ohio, from Polly Winsler on behalf of her late husband, Denny Winsler.
Good evening, council. In front of you, you should have the resolution, a map of the property, and then also the first page of a 327-page report that I received from the Winsler family stating that, to their knowledge and from the soil samples, the property is clean. Yeah. And if you want to see the 327 page... But I thought the first page would be enough to, to at least make sure they have gone through that process, and we know.
And she's going to sign off with the photo that says the property is clean.
Absolutely. Yep.
I'll move to suspend.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy? And Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve.
Judy? Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary? And Rick?
Yes.
Certainly want to thank the Winsler family for that donation.
Absolutely. Next item is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 572023, a resolution to accept a $40,000 donation from the Brian VFW to the Street Department for memorial benches at Fountain Grove Cemetery.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This fall, Dan Bonney of the Department of Veteran Services contacted the mayor about these benches, and we met with him out there once or twice, but the money came from the VFW, correct? But it went through the Department of Veteran Services, so we didn't actually get a $40,000 donation. We got the benches. And they were installed last month. The Street Department poured the concrete that the benches sit on, and I don't know if you...
Are they like memorial install?
Yeah, so they actually represent all branches of the military. Yep, they're very nice, black granite, right by the, the flagpole that we do the Memorial Day ceremony, so go, go check that out.
And there's a picture of it in Saturday's paper, the dedication. So this is just to accept the donation of the benches.
So sorry, we're like two days late.
John, so all right. I'll move to, to accept. Oh, are you done? I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, but I wanted to thank the VFW and the Department of Veteran Services.
I move to accept. The donation?
Suspend.
But you can suspend though, right?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Next item is to set the time and dates for council meetings in 2024.
Well, yes, council, since this will be your last meeting of 2023, we needed to have this on the agenda, because our first meeting will actually be moved because of a holiday. If you look, the dates that are going to be moved are the recognized holidays of the New Year, Martin Luther King, Labor Day, and our Ready, Set, Relax Observation Evening. So if you approve those, we will go ahead and set the calendar for the 2024 council meetings. Again, those will begin at 5:30 PM on the first and third Mondays, unless these recognized holidays.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And our final item for this evening is to elect a replacement for me, so...
I'd like to make a motion for this. This will be my last motion. I'd like to nominate Mary for president and Jim for vice president.
I'll second that.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
With that, that concludes our agenda. So we will go around the room. Mayor, do you have anything further?
Um, one, I would like to sincerely thank John and Christie, and quite frankly, all the department heads. On Monday, during our typical department head meeting, I was in Lima testifying for the Senate housing, and then had a meeting in Defiance at Mommy Valley Planning. On Thursday, when the agenda gets built, I was in Columbus for AMP, so I was not present on those two days, and they all really showed their leadership and ability to pull together to build a really large year-end agenda, and I just want to thank them for doing that. I know it takes a lot of work, and I know you, you had plenty for your year-end. I want to thank all of the employees. It has been a great year in 2023. We have accomplished a lot together, and I just am fortunate to be mayor in a really cool community that has fantastic employees, top to bottom, and we enjoyed together a city lunch, which was really nice, the community building. I'd also like to thank BMU. Derek communicates with me frequently. We, we bounce ideas back and forth together, certainly enjoy the staff over at BMU and, and the board, and I want to thank the Winslers for their in the board, and I want to thank the Winslers for their donation. I think it's so thoughtful of them to think of our Parks Department, especially with that coming off Mayberry Drive. Judy, again, thank you for your eight years. Rick, thank you for your leadership this year, and I want to wish you all a safe and happy Christmas and New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. John, do you have anything further?
I don't have a voice anymore.
He's done talking.
Well, thank you for all you did this evening. Engineering?
Judy, you've been here eight years, I'm 18 here. I appreciate you, and you will be missed. Thank you for your years of service, and not discounting Rick for one year of presidency. You did a great job, but Judy, eight years, thank you. Appreciate it.
Chief?
You.
Sorry.
Judy, again, I'll just echo what everybody says. You've been tremendous. It's been an honor getting to work with you. Your support from the police department's not gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Zoning?
Thank you, Judy, and happy holidays.
Short, sweet, to the point.
That's our Andy.
Streets?
Thank you, Judy.
Fire chief? Thank you, Judy. It's been a pleasure. Parks?
Yeah, just quickly wanted to thank Polly and the late Denny Winsler and their family for all the property and their support of our park system. Kip was a huge part in helping us through this, so I want to publicly thank Kip, even though he asked me not to do that, but he's been a great help to us. And Judy, I know we'll see you every morning, but the Parks does appreciate the support you've given us for the last eight years, and I know that won't change, so we'll see you in the morning, I promise.
Waste water?
I want to say thank you too, Judy. Just kind of bring up the tail end of everything here, but you've always supported us out there when we needed it, and really appreciate it, and glad we got to know each other a little bit over the years.
BMU, BPA?
I guess I have to follow suit. Thanks, Judy. It's been a pleasure working with the city council and you especially, with BMU and Board of Public Affairs. Thank you, you'll be missed.
Yeah, thank you, Judy. Thank you for serving. I'll see you in the morning. Jim?
Sure. I first want to thank the employees and the department heads. It's been a great year, and I appreciate all of you. I thank the Winslers for their land donation. I thank the VFW for their donation. And thank Judy. Mary, I wish you nothing but the best, and I'm grateful for the time we've had with you guys. So thank you.
Mary?
I want to thank you, Rick. Thank you for having me here to help. And I want to thank the Winslers, the VFW, thank all the city employees. I really want to thank Judy. I'm probably in the right setting, but I gained a friend, and I already had a friend because I covered babysitting with her husband, so she'd go to a football game and he was passing to cancer, and that's been the most special moment of my life, and I brought us closer, so the past eight years have been wonderful. Thank you, Judy.
John?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Judy for her eight years of dedicated service to Bryan, and well as Rick for being president, also to the Winslers family for their generous donation for contiguous land to our parks. It's very valuable to, to us, and I appreciate it a lot. Also to the Riddies for their investment in Bryan, and to the VFW for their generous donation for the memorial benches. I think that's outstanding.
Mr. Fishel, I missed you. Do you have anything?
That's okay, but I did, I've, I've not gotten to work with Judy as long as you folks have, but her being willing to, to serve on the negotiation committee, I've certainly enjoyed your, the time I've got to spend with you, and actually very much enjoyed your perspective and input. I think it's been very useful for the city, and I'm, you know, again, I'm an outsider here, but I know you'll be missed, at least in this room.
Thank you. I just want to say, first of all, that it's been fantastic working with these people on council. I think that we have been a good group, that we have accomplished a lot of things, and we will continue to accomplish a lot of good things for the city of Bryan. It's been my pleasure to serve as the president of council this past year, and my honor, and I appreciate all the, all the good words that you have said about, about my leadership. One person that I'm going to miss on council is going to be Judy. She has done a magnificent job over the last eight years, and her perspective, her drive, and her love for the community have been evident throughout those eight years, and you will be greatly missed. I want to say beyond that, that we have, in, in my opinion, and I've been doing this for a little while, I feel that the city of Bryan and you as department heads, and top to bottom, we are top-notch, and I'm very, very proud to be a part of all of this every day, because we, we are doing a lot of very good things in the city of Bryan, and without you people, it would never happen. So you need to know that what you do on a daily basis is very appreciated. And with that, I'm going to say Merry Christmas, have a safe and happy New Year, and I'm going to turn it over to Judy.
I said I wasn't going to cry, so this has been an experience I will never, ever forget. I've enjoyed every minute of it, even the discussions we've had when we didn't agree, because we came out with an ending that was good for the citizens of Bryan, and that's why we're here, is to do the best job we can for this community. You guys have been fantastic to work for. Anytime I had a problem or a question, you were right there, and I hope council realizes they know their job, let them do it. They'll come to you if they have a problem, but you're all super, super.